Okay, here we go. Good evening. I'd like to open the public meeting for Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, at 1900 hours. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so we just came out of non-public under RSA 91A, 3, 2, and...
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
As the board just came out of a non-public meeting under RSA 91A, C, and I believe it was E, if that's correct, and compensation is E.
Compensation is B.
B.
A, I'm sorry, A.
A, so A and C, and I would move that we keep the minutes of that meeting sealed until, in the opinion of the majority of the board, the circumstances no longer apply.
Second. Second by Edvin, any discussion? Edvin?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Kate?
She's not here yet.
Okay, and I'm an aye, okay. And sealed, non-public meetings from last week, we want to, I need a motion to take some of that out, correct?
I'm sorry, before we get there, I just want to back up. I want to alter my motion slightly to say, in terms of the compensation, there is stuff directed towards the bookkeeper that she will need to know, so I want to be able to release that, so can we alter my motion?
Sure. Any discussion on that? Okay, all right, we're still all in favor.
Okay, and the other one you just said, Larry, was...
Release the paragraph to the fire chief.
So, there is a, of course, I left it downstairs, I wrote it, but there is a excerpt from last, or two weeks ago's, non-public meeting that I've outlined, and I'd like to move to release that section of the minutes to the fire chief and road agent.
Second.
Second by Edvin, any discussion? Edvin?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Kate, you here yet?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope, she's coming. There she is.
Okay, so we're going to move on while we're waiting for Kate. Under update of traffic mirror request from the residents, so we received a letter from the Department of Transportation, and I'll just read it. It says, addressed to Diane, "We have reviewed this, and District 6 will not permit the installation of a convex mirror at NH, New Hampshire 108 intersection with PZ Crossing and Wentworth Drive in Newton. The convex mirrors are not standard traffic control devices, and the decision is consistent with other districts within the state." So to the resident who brought up the, apologies for forgetting your name, the request to the mirror, we did go to the state and the state denied it.
The only thing I would add to that is, you know, that's just, the state denied it.
Right.
But there's still considerations, not promising anything, but there's still things we can discuss within town, because I think the board would agree, you know, traffic safety is important to us, especially, we've all driven that intersection.
Absolutely.
We know what it's like there.
Okay, number C, harassment course update, A, review list of individuals who have not taken the course. Would that be the ones in white, Nancy?
The ones in white, yeah.
I think the ones in green are the ones that have taken it, and the ones in white have not.
Green have taken it?
Not.
Okay. And so, we're going to go from A, review the list, to B, what's the recourse now on those who did not take it, and then C, what does Rapid All-in-One pay non-employees for taking the course?
I think we should have an email sent out to all those employees that didn't take it, and give them till the 30th.
Give them what?
Give them till this Friday to take it.
Or what?
That's, that's a good question.
That's the recourse that we're looking for.
I mean, I was thinking similarly, but I think we should schedule a course for all of those employees, an in-person course. Trish, I'm sure, would love to do another one, and we'll expect them all to attend that course, but let's schedule it out far enough that they have two weeks in order, they could go online, if they, if that's a bad date for them. They can go online, complete it, check the box, and move on. Otherwise, we're going to expect them to be in the room.
Okay, so my question now is, is the town mandating this, or who has to take it? Because that seems to be a question.
We've, we've done this before, so people should understand, this is not like a new thing. So, I think it was three or four years ago, I know Larry was on the board, we sat in here, we, we all took the course. We can mandate to our employees, because they are our employees, we're going to tell them that they need to take it. We're not taking it just to be difficult, we're taking it because it's a risk mitigation strategy, it's recommended by our insurance company, that's why we're doing it. So, we can direct our employees to do it. As far as non-employees, we can't, we can't really direct them to take this course. If they want to help us with risk mitigation, I think that's a good thing, especially elected officials, but we can't really direct them to.
So, is reference as an employee versus, say, committee, a committee volunteers their time.
Yeah.
So we can't make them, but an employee would be someone who gets a paycheck, correct?
Yeah.
But, on the other hand, the town does not want to pay those employees for taking this course.
Who in town doesn't want to pay them for...
I think Joe wants to speak.
Here, I guess, one of the, Joe Simone, by the way, I'm one of the trustees of the trust fund, and I think I started this, McGillicuddy. If the town is mandated, if they're employees, is an elected official an employee?
No.
It's not?
Nope. I, that's, again, we're not, this isn't the first time we've done this.
No, I realize that.
Years ago, we said to the elected officials, will you help us out and take this class? We didn't mandate, can't mandate an elected official to take something.
So, the question, the question, another question I have is, I think they're going over lists, I think, of 29 or 30 people, and the original thing that I put across was like $5. It's not a heck of a lot of money, as opposed to, you know, as opposed to the whole scheme of things. I think it benefits the town to, you know, say, hey, anyone who's on a board, or a volunteer, you know, whatever, they're able to do it.
Yeah, and I think last time around, we had quite a few elected officials that did come to the class without being...
Yeah, I think it's, I personally think it's only fair, and, you know, I hate to be a sickler about this, but it's just a principle of the thing more than anything else. The $5 is not the issue, it's a principle of the thing.
Yeah.
So, you know, if you need to rewrite the, or restate the original policy that you said, maybe that's an easy way to do it and get it done. And if that's the case, make an amendment to it.
I'm, I'm missing something because I don't, it was my understanding, if you're an employee, and we're sending you to training, you get paid to go to training. You get, I mean...
That's what you voted on, and I was paid.
Yeah, I mean, that's, and that's, that's really fairness, right?
But, the question becomes, those who get a stipend for the year, are they employees? Some say no, some say yeah.
Well, they get a payroll check from the, from the town.
They do, yeah.
They get a payroll check every December for $250. If you want to break that down on an hourly basis, it's peanuts. But it's, once again, it's a principle of the thing.
I mean, we could. I'm, personally, I'm not expecting to get paid for my time. If, if we took all the hours, we all weren't against my stipend for the year, you know? But, but, you know, the, the key thing, I think, as an employee, is somebody who's accountable to the Board of Selectmen, is the way I look at it. If you're an elected official, you're not accountable to the board.
I think as an elected official, I think the trustees are accountable to the state and the town.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
So, I mean, one of the same.
Well, when I did the email out to everybody, everybody got a copy of it, nobody, I had boards, commissions, and elected officials, and nobody corrected that. Larry didn't like volunteers, so I removed the board volunteers. But, the elected officials are the ones that are running the town. I think of all people, they should take the class. It's not just a matter of taking the class, you, you know, we get paid for it, but everybody that represents the town should be taking this. Everybody is susceptible to having harassment or whatever.
So Joe represents...
I, I interface with a lot of the people at the banks, and, you know, the work I do, so.
So he represents the town, he should get paid, but he's not getting paid.
Right, well, that's what we're trying to figure out, but...
And the $5 figure that I threw out, that was just an arbitrary number that I came up with, I thought would be, you know, fair and reasonable.
Right.
You also have to look at, you know, I've listed the ones I have certificates for, but there might be other people that took it, didn't give me the sort, so you, you don't want to single anybody out, but then again, where is the money going to come from? Because not everybody has a budget that they can draw from, you know, and the budgets are very tight. That's all I'm going to say. You make your decision, do whatever you want, but I don't, you know, this is afterthought thing, and maybe it should be worked out for the next time around, but that's my opinion, you know?
Like I said, I think the easiest way to do is just restate the policy. Makes it a lot easier.
Oh.
Trish? Good.
So, Trisha McCarthy, so way back when, and Nancy might remember when we did this, I'm going back 10, 12 years, we also, I think it was a sexual harassment class that we were doing, and we did the same thing, we said, you know, everybody's going to take it, and then somebody said, wait a minute, you know, I'm a volunteer, and I don't remember which committee it was, but, you know, I don't get paid, so you can't make me do anything, I'm not an employee. And at the time, we talked to the Department of Labor, I'm the one that did, and they said, if in the future you're going to do something like this, and I don't know if you'll remember this, Nancy, they suggested that for volunteers like committee people, that when we swear them in, there should be something on the document where we swear them in, that they also agree to take any risk management classes that may come up. So that kind of covered us with saying, hey, you volunteers, and I'm going to pick on conservation, let's say, because they're all volunteers. That would say, remember when you got sworn in, you did agree to comply. So that might help us, Mr. Policeman over there, and Kate, Policy Lady, you might want to work on that. And as far as employee versus non-employee, if you, I would agree with what Joe says, if you get a paycheck of any sort, I would think it would qualify as an employee. You're not an independent contractor, you're an employee, I think. That's my thing.
All right, so what does the board want to do? How many people are we talking? Do you have a number?
It's on the sheet I gave you.
Well, I know you said 30, right?
Well, let's, let's just be clear about what we're talking about right now. So, the employee discussion is done, right? Are we all in agreement with that?
Yeah.
The employees have already been directed, we're now just, we're now just saying there's, at least one person wants the board to define whether elected officials are part of that group, correct? That's, that's what's on the table right here, right? So, so we know, we need to know how many elected officials, and that's on there. My, for some reason, this isn't coming up for me.
So you could do what Joe recommends and change...
I see like two, but I don't know, I don't know everybody.
I'm sorry, Diane?
You could do what Joe recommends and change it to say, to make a motion to say that the, per Board of Selectmen, are informing all town employees that they need to take the course, and recommend, strongly recommend that elected officials, volunteers, and members of boards, commissions, and committees take the course. That might, would, would that, is that what you're thinking?
But those are the ones that aren't getting paid.
Yeah, but is that with pay or without pay? That's the question.
You're only recommending, so they don't need to take it.
You may have copied that, but didn't you say in the original motion, any payroll employee, any payroll person?
Yes.
Paid employees will be compensated for one hour webinar.
And then there's a lot of people that don't, so what do we do about the people that don't? Now, I did send out another email to all the department heads, as we discussed at the last meeting, to give me a list of your employees who have not taken the class. Right now, I've only received Board of Appeals and Planning Board.
So, I mean, we start talking about volunteers, to me, volunteers are off the table.
Yeah, we took that out.
Okay. Because I, I hope no one has any issue with that, because if I'm, if I'm a volunteer, I mean, it's, I just volunteered to go to a meeting twice a month or whatever, and help with an activity or whatever, like, I'm not...
A lot of times, some of the volunteers, like those people who...
Do you need to step up to the mic so Kate can hear you? It's okay.
Just to interject, in terms of volunteers, as I understand it, those people who volunteer, their time for like Little League, football, softball, soccer, I believe they're mandated to take a risk assessment course as well. One of my buddies just talked to me about it the other day, he had to do it.
Right, that's not part of the town, though.
Oh, no, no, but I'm seeing that some of the volunteers that run some of these boards, they're already mandated to do it by, you know, volunteering their time with any of these youth organizations.
Yeah, if, if they want to stay doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I, I would, I would say, it's tough for us to get volunteers, I wouldn't want to find ways for them to. But, I mean, I'll, 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 I'll put it in a motion, I, and I don't have the text of what we originally sent in front of me, but, but I would move to strongly recommend that elected officials take this class, and, you know, as, as part of the motion, I don't think we need to compensate, it's a half-hour class.
No, it's an hour.
It's an hour. I still don't think we need to compensate, I might be alone on that.
So you recommend, but it's not mandated?
Correct.
Can I get a second for discussion?
Second for discussion.
Okay. Kate, you on yet? Kate, you have anything?
I just think we send out the email, even volunteers we suggest, and give them a link. That's, that's all I got.
Edvin?
We did that.
Yeah.
We're, we're about at the end of this now.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
We don't want to start over again.
Yeah.
Edvin, you have anything?
I got nothing, I think we just move on with Matt's...
All right, so we'll call the motion. Kate?
Aye.
Edvin?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
I'm an aye. So, Joe, I apologize that you took it, you're not going to get compensated, but next year, it's your option to take it or not.
Right.
Sorry, buddy.
And Trish, you're going to book two more classes?
Whatever the last one you have.
Because we already did four, and nobody showed up, and...
Really?
Am I paying you out of my department for this?
So far, you haven't.
Yeah, so I get to absorb the cost.
There's no money anywhere.
Well, she's not going to do it for nothing.
No, no, I'm not saying that. None of us is...
Our officials not get paid.
Well, you, we won't get paid this year, but maybe the policy committee can work on it for next year.
You do is change the original motion, including...
Right, and I, and, and let's just be clear, I think, I don't think anybody's proposing we do this every year. This is something we do periodically.
Try to like every other year, or every three years.
Yeah, we don't really have any sort of a set expectation of it, but I would, I would move to pay for Trish's time out of, out of the legal budget line item.
Second.
Second by, was that Kate?
That's me.
You? Edvin? Okay. Edvin?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, she gets $100 an hour to teach that, you know?
But, but, I mean, but, but let me be clear, what I was stating earlier, and hopefully, let's, I'll make it a motion, is I would move to schedule one more class, one more class, and Trish can give us options, right, as to when you're available. One, one more class, that will be the final date, everyone is expected, every employee is expected to complete this class. Employees will still have an option to complete the online class prior to that. So that's my motion.
Second.
Second for discussion, so I want to know what the outcome will be for those who don't do it. If that's seen...
I think, I think the outcome is, I mean, this, there's no great mystery here, the outcome is, people are going to get written up.
Getting written up, okay, how long do we have it in the...
I'm sorry, but it's...
Who's writing them up? What?
Right, but, you know, let's...
Well, they're being a department head.
Let's, let's be honest, most of us work for somebody. I've, I've encountered this before, where I've had to take, you know, some sort of risk management training, and if I didn't take it, it was clear that there was going to be a price to pay, so...
Okay, so roll call on the motion. Kate?
Aye.
Edvin?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Joe, did you have something?
No, you, you have my question.
Okay. All right. So now we've got the updated personnel policy on anti-harassment discrimination policy. Did everyone get a chance to look at it?
Yes.
Does anybody have any issues with it? It only took 17 years to update it.
But I think this was a Primex recommendation, right, in terms of the language?
Yes.
Was it a Primex recommendation? So, yeah, nothing really stuck out on it. Now, is this going to every employee to re-sign now?
Yeah, I think, once it gets approved by the board, then it'll go out to everyone. It'll go in the personnel policy, so when it gets updated again by the committee, then we can add this in.
So I didn't read this word for word, did somebody read where it says that you must take a harassment course like every three years, or, and updated? I don't know how you want to word it, but if it's in here, and they sign it, then we're not going to have an issue.
I don't think it's in there.
No, I didn't.
But we want to put it in there.
So when somebody gets hired, they get a copy of all the policies, and they're told to go to the website. They sign a form for the personnel policy, saying that I have received them and I will read them, so that goes in their files. So if there's an issue, we can say, you agreed to read them, if you didn't read them, now it's on you.
All right, could I get a motion to accept a new policy?
Motion to accept amendment of the policy of the anti-harassment discrimination policy.
Second, Matt.
Second by Matt, any discussion? Kate?
Aye.
Edvin?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
I'm an aye, okay. Okay, next, E, library inspection violations. So why did this come to the board?
Because you own the building.
So, but, I mean, so, we did our annual inspection the other day, and, again, there's conflict between the fire alarm system, which is the panel and the strobes, those are strobes, and the emergency lighting. Now, maybe you guys could explain to me, who does the emergency lighting?
For what, testing?
Yeah, CDX assign up there?
On the...
Who does the repairs and the testing?
The repairs? We had to have these replaced by an electrician.
So it's not part of the fire alarm contract?
No.
Okay, so those are out, so those have to get taken care of.
At the library.
At the library. Those should be checked once a year, by, I don't know if, we don't have a contract for that, I'm assuming not. Usually I like to loop it in with the fire alarm company, that he should be testing them, because it's part of his inspection, and then when he gives the report, then we can call the electrician. Instead of having the electrician come in, he's going to charge you to walk to the door, right?
Yep.
Just to press a button. So two of them are out, I believe, and then the, when he did his fire alarm inspection this year, he put, down in the basement, I don't know if you've ever been down there, there used to be an old bulkhead, and it's padlocked from the inside and outside, and he put one of those by that, by that door, and those are the ones...
He didn't do that this year.
Huh?
He didn't do that this year, all he did, all he did was...
Jerry said that's new.
Hmm?
Jerry said it's new.
It's not new this year, then, I don't know when it was done, because I was there when he did the inspection, and all he did was sound the alarms and check the smoke detectors...
Well, he must have did it last year, then, and we didn't do an inspection last year, due to COVID, they weren't open.
Is that J&amp;M Protective they're talking about?
Yes.
So they put it where, it's supposed to be by an exit door, like that one is, so that has to get moved.
I don't think he installed those, though, but I don't know, I'm not sure.
We're out of it. It really should be the fire chief that's dealing with these, with whoever the contractor...
Well, apparently it is, when the guy went to do his work, he, the guy didn't go see the fire chief. Again, we had this discussion last year.
He didn't go see the fire chief.
He didn't go see the fire chief. So that's why we're in the same boat as last year.
Yeah, and I, I think when that happened, we sent something to that company.
To J&amp;M, right.
Where we said, you interact with the fire chief, you don't, you don't...
Right, exactly.
Don't let nobody...
Sign off, your final sign off for your work is not from Diane, not from Nancy, it's from the fire chief.
So if we could just contact him and have him talk to the chief next week, how's that, on the violation?
Why don't we have the chief just call him, because he also has to talk to him about the violation we got for the, the document room.
Okay.
So let the chief call him.
Name of the company is J&amp;M.
J&amp;M.
I would move to direct the fire chief to contact J&amp;M regarding closing out the library...
Violation.
Inspection violations, as well as the...
They're going to put electric, uh, smoke detectors or whatever in the document room out here.
As well as the document room at Town Hall.
Right.
Second.
And as far as the exit signs at the library, that'd be Kingston Electric as the contractor?
Until you tell me exactly what needs to be done.
They're not working.
At this point, you should have the fire chief look, or, and talk to the electrician, because I don't know what you guys need done at this point.
And that's kind of what I put in my motion, saying, closing out those concerns in terms of what, what the plan is, not just column, but say, what do you need us to do?
Well, they're not working, you press the button, they don't come on.
So my suggestion is, the fire chief's doing the violations to us, so he should be dealing with the people who are responsible for those...
Well, tell the people that are responsible to stop going to Town Hall, or, or to librarian.
He hasn't been, we've told him to go see the chief. In fact, he should be going to see the chief on Monday.
Then we'll fire, you know, this is the second time, we'll just get a new company. He's violating the contract.
Then do whatever you need to do.
Okay, all right.
I think the motion still works.
Yeah, that's fine. Water quality at the fire station.
Did you, you made the motion?
I said, I said second.
Okay, so can we have the vote, please? Sorry.
Kate?
Aye.
Edvin?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so, the water at the Board of Select, we need to do something with water at the fire station, both water bubblers that the taxpayers paid for can't be used, just look at them. Now, the $800 Keurig stopped working because of bad water, I have a service call in, see if we can clean the tubes, what's next? Is anybody here from the Fire Department want to talk about the water?
This is the first I've heard of it. Anyone else?
You had it in an email several weeks ago.
Yep.
Yep. Now, Bob Zelinski, Newton Fire, we just recently had one of the trucks detailed and the gentleman turned around and said, how old's this truck? 10, 14 years old? It's three years old. You have to take a razor blade to take the water spots off the windshield. We have a water softening system, but like the chairman said, the tube water-
Bubblers?
Water bubbles we have, it's like they've turned colors, the stainless steel finish on the top. We don't drink the water. We have to have bottled water. So, and like I say, we have a water softening system, but there's something else that has to be done.
What's the solution?
Exactly.
I mean, I don't really need-
Another water test maybe and, or have a water specialist come in?
Yeah, definitely a water test because it initially was fine.
Did we just get, did we get that done while we opened? No?
Yeah.
I think we did.
We did?
I mean, I, I would move-
I remember.
Okay.
I, I don't know what the generic term would be for one of these companies.
Neither do I.
You know what I'm talking about though, like a, um-
Probably a water filter.
Water testing company.
Yeah, so.
Well, first, first you need a test and then they give a recommendation as what needs to be done after they get tested.
I think the same company will do that and, and I'm thinking, let's see if I can Google that and get the right generic term before I make this motion.
You call a water specialist. How's that?
About, um-
Are you thinking a softener? A water softener?
No, there's companies out there that do like home filtering systems.
Water analysts? I have water analysts here.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll do this one. So I would move to engage a water treatment company to give us an evaluation of the water at 8 Merrimack Road.
Just the fire station?
Yeah, I want to do the whole.
Second for discussion. Would that be a bid then? Would we have to put that up?
It depends on how much they come back with.
Yeah, because that water comes from the PD, right?
Yeah.
So you'd have to do both buildings.
Yeah, I don't know if there's two wells or just-
It's one well and it's split off. Way I was told to make. So it's one well you would have to deal with.
All right, second by Edvin. Any more discussion?
So I guess the, the key thing here is who's going to be responsible for this. Because Diane was about to ask me that question, I think.
I was going to ask you where the money coming from.
Yeah.
Well, that's probably going to be our famous 8 Merrimack Road account.
Or being what?
But my, my key question now is who's, who's going to handle this? Because we need somebody with access to the, the building.
Has the building been released to the town yet? I mean, you know. So, you know, because it'd be the builder's responsibility if it was still his. Or did we get an occupancy permit and it's yours?
Who's, who does it belong to? That was supposed to be on the agenda tonight, wasn't it?
I don't know about tonight, but the occupancy permit is pending, so.
Oh no, it's not turned over yet.
So what I'm, what I'm going to, so let me clean up my motion. What I propose is to have the Board of Selectmen Secretary call one of these companies.
Pick one.
Pick one, exactly, to get a better idea of cost because as Edvin says, if, if we're talking, you know, 4,500 bucks, then we're getting bids. But find the company, there's one in Kingston, I believe.
There you go.
And work with whoever is on duty at the time at the fire station can let them in, Ziggy, right?
I mean, I'd say the fire chief.
Yeah, he's probably there most of the time.
If it's one well, right, if it's one well-
That's what I was told, one well.
Then we should look at both buildings.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Okay, all right.
I'm more concerned with the fire station because police department is all, pretty much always manned. So there's, and there's a secretary there to let them in. It's more the fire station.
Okay, I just want to make sure both buildings get.
So let me, let me clean this up because this is an awful motion. So I would move to direct the Selectmen Secretary to engage a water treatment company to meet with somebody at the fire station and somebody at the police station to do an initial assessment about what we have to deal with at 8 Merrimack Road.
I'm just going to say that typically, if you've all built, you, you start with an environmental testing company. There are like five good ones in the state that come in and first test the water. And then based on that, you figure out who you hire. Let's say the water has a certain thing, someone's better with that than something else. So just another thought. It's much simpler.
I need a second on this motion.
Second.
Second by Edvin. Now, any more discussion? Okay, Kate?
I mean, yeah, as long as you call it the right thing and keep it in budget.
Edvin?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Aye.
It works.
Yeah, I think the thing is, it's one of those things, we're sitting here, we don't have all the information in front of us. It's very difficult to vote on anything, but let's start the wheels turning. I'm sure we're going to get more information probably with our first phone call and Kate may be correct, you know?
Okay, number G, grant application volunteer fire assistant. Who's speaking on that for the Fire Department? Nobody? Okay, so it looks like it's a grant on the forestry part of it for 50-50 match. So obviously if you go for 4,000, the state puts in 2,000 and the department puts in 2,000. I believe he wants to put in for a grant and he has the money in the forestry budget. And the list of items are in the back here for totaling of 1,744.15. So I would assume he's, um, his grant match would be 872.75, which he has the money for. So before any grants go in, the Selectmen have to look at it and approve. So the total projects are $1,744.15 and his 50% match would be 872.75. Any questions from the board? Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved. Any discussion? Kate?
Aye.
Edvin?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Okay. Open sale bids for the solid waste disposal. Like you said, that's these two? Wait, it's just two of them here?
Just on the color scheme, I'm sure you can figure out which one that is.
Do we just have to do the company in the amount?
Yeah, I think so.
Just so you know, Mellow Disposal, Jason is here if you want to.
Which company is he?
G Mellow.
Mellow Disposal.
Mellow? That's the one you have?
Yep.
All right, Edvin, you can go first. Read yours. Well, it's just a company in the amount, correct?
Well, it depends. I don't know what the differences are. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean-
Well, yeah, we have to look at them because we just received them.
It would be this 14.56 per ton, right? That'd be the number.
I mean, the, the intention isn't really for us to decide tonight. It's-
Right.
To, to take a couple of weeks to, to read this stuff over. And we can just, I mean, I would, I would move to accept the-
Two bids.
To accept the bids from Waste Management and Mellow as written.
I got a second.
Second.
Second by Edvin. Any discussion? Kate?
Aye.
Edvin?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Okay.
Question on that. If you're accepting the bids, does that mean you're-
Accepting for review?
I think, okay, I'll go with that.
Yeah, I mean, why don't we do that? I'll accept that amendment to my, my motion. And, and the other thing I would say, if there's a gentleman here from Mellow, it'd be great to hear from him tonight since he came all the way out.
Do you have any questions? This is the time.
Exactly. Yep. Good evening.
Disposal. I really just came to answer any questions that you might have. It's a pretty straightforward proposal.
I think we've done business with Mellow in the past, right?
I've had the transfer station for approximately 18 years, I believe.
Right, right.
A while. So what's your estimate, ball figure, if we got a, a third compactor? Just a rough idea.
To install a third compactor?
Yeah.
The, the hard part, I wouldn't know what the chute costs. Your two chutes definitely are in dire need of repair. And the town owns the chutes. I own the compactors. The compactors themselves, right now, probably right around $25,000.
$25,000?
But the price, the price of steel fluctuates so much right now, the, the change is weekly. We had given quotes a couple of times in the past to replace the chutes because they were so bad, but the town just never had the money to do it. We proposed a, which we could still do, a lease to own on the chutes where I'd pay for them upfront if you so desired, and then it would just be a rental fee on it and paid for over time.
Is that something we could do after, if he was to get the bid? Something we could do after? How does that work?
What, look into it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Kate, do you have any questions?
No, I do not. Thanks.
Edvin?
Negative.
Matt?
Thank you very much for coming out.
Yeah, we'll, we'll review all of these when we have time to get into them further, but thank you for-
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
Next, open sale bids for solid waste disposal.
No. Open transfer station debris removal. You're on, uh, you're on aye.
I'm sorry, transfer station debris removal.
Only one.
That's it?
Only one.
Plus the one that Mike had. Didn't Mike have one?
Nope, that's all we got.
I have mine.
And this is the three piles, right? The pallets, the branches and-
The piles and leveling, yes.
So the only bid that came from was Probark. So we'll, uh, we'll take the, um, the bid from Probark under review along with the other two and we'll discuss at the next meeting, correct? Or do you guys just want to accept it?
I think I'd, I'd like to take it under review because I want to hear from Pete and Mike.
Okay.
See what they think. And we can vote at the next meeting.
Can I just say that when Mike met with the board before, he said the pile was pretty high. This is the only bid you got. I don't think you have a choice. You got to get that brush pile down.
Yeah, but I, I don't want to vote until I'm talking to the people who have the most knowledge, though. I mean, it's just, do you want me to spend all, all that money without having the people involved answer?
You don't have a choice. What do you, what else are you going to do?
Go back to the drawing board. We've done that before.
So you want to have Mike, the road agent, review that?
And Pete.
Pete won't have anything that, I don't have the full bid, yeah. I'll, I'll ask him to review it, yep.
Okay. J, Puzzle Lane Industrial Park Economic Revitalization Zone Renewal Form.
So this is a farm from the state, um, started back in, I think, 1999. I don't have all the paperwork in front of me, but this is just a renewal and they want to just make sure that we're still, they still qualify. So I did have the planning board review it, or Jim, I should say, for the planning board and everything seems to be in order. We just need the board to say, you know, to sign it.
So do we need to sign it or just acknowledge it?
We need to sign it, send it back to the state.
It has your name, it's your name that's on it.
Yeah. Oh, it's me that signs it? Oh, so I need your approval for me to sign it.
Okay, so I get a motion for the town administrator to sign the renewal of the ERZ certification.
So moved, would move, or second that motion.
Second by Matt. Any discussion? Kate?
Aye.
Edvin?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Okay, budget season. Review 2022 proposed budget meeting schedule.
I sent that out to everybody. Um, it's an, actually, I think Kim sent it out too.
Yep.
So it's an aggressive schedule and hopefully you'll agree to it. If not, you'll be meeting much more time, many more times.
I mean, we kind of have to-
I mean, I would move to approve the schedule as written. Keeping in mind the fact on the fly, we might have to make adjustments.
Second.
Second by Kate. Any discussion? Edvin?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Okay. The schedule looks good.
Where is Kim's memo?
Bookkeeper memo, capping budgetary increases in subcommittee.
I mean, I, you know, I read this and just my opinion, I don't think I'd be in favor of a subcommittee. But I would be in favor of a predetermined cap and-
Before they do these?
Exactly, and, and my cap would be 1%.
1% over last year's budget?
Yes.
That's going to be hard.
So basically, if, if we-
Mr. Zelinski?
State your name, please.
Bob Zelinski, citizen in Newton, Newton Junction. 1% cap, that's silly. Last year, I mean, I gather those information sent out by the Selectmen, keep your budget level. Well, some, and that came from the office. But there's some people raised their budget 10%, others kept theirs. Let the people present the budget they think they can efficiently run their department and then talk to them. I've been in business for years and purchasing a lot of budget meetings. What, what does the departments really need? Not you people saying 1%. Ask any homeowner here, did their budget go up 1% this year? Everything, electricity, gasoline, and you want the departments that are trying to keep your town safe just increasing it 1%, but then on the other hand, hey, does another department 10%? Maybe they won't hear about it. No.
Keep in mind, I'm the only one who opened my mouth here.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying.
You know what I'm saying, so if you want to look at me, you can do it.
No, no, I'm just, you know.
But, but here's the thing, is I've been in business for years too and this is exactly what we get. We get challenged every year. We say, you're going to either slash your budget by this percentage or you, you can cap it at this percentage.
But why slash the budget?
I'm not saying, I'm not saying the approved-
But you've driven down a lot of roads that are bumpy and I'm not, nothing against Mike, nothing against the police department on details or having more policemen to, you know, catch the speeders, which is crazy. But I mean, let's them present the budget that they think would keep the town safe and neat. And then when they meet with you at these meetings, you know, go over each, I don't know if you go over each line item.
So I guess what I, I didn't kind of finish my thought, but what I'm saying is, we're not saying, or what I'm, we, I shouldn't be saying we right now because I'm the only one who said it. But I wasn't, I wasn't proposing at the end, everybody goes up 1%. I was saying, as you, as you present to us a proposed budget, we cap it at 1%. If you need to go higher than 1%, then we need to have really an extended discussion, right? But for all these budgets that, you're talking about going line item by line item. All these budgets that we get proposed to us, which are flat, maybe they're even under it, or maybe they're just 1%. We don't have to spend an entire meeting going over those budgets. Let's face it, there's about three or four budgets that really draw the most from the main budget. And at, at the end of the day, the budget in total might only go up a couple of percentage points. I guess that's all I'm proposing, but we can hear from others. That's all I got to say.
So was that a motion that you made, 1%?
No, no, not yet. I just threw it out there.
Joe?
Joe Simone, to go along with Mr. Zelinski's point, I think the inflation rate now is about 5% and it looks like it's going higher. So, you know, we're talking about goods and services and stuff like that, so please keep that in mind. But I also figure, I also say that let the people come forth with the budget that they think they need to run the department and then during the review process, then you can cut, slash weed, add, delete, whatever.
Yeah, we'll see what they turn in.
Yeah, I, um, so I mean, I, we all know, I'm new to this thing. So I, I, yeah, I agree with what Mrs. Zelinski said, that's, and Mrs. Simone. Yeah, let, let the departments bring it up to us and go from there.
But the schedule looks good anyway, so.
So my final question on this point, so we don't want to put in any cap whatsoever? Should we just want to let it ride?
Be responsible.
Yeah.
Know we're going to look at them line, line by line and see where it goes.
Yeah, that's what we did before and it was good.
Yeah, I don't know if it was good, but that's what we did before.
Well, I mean, I, I noticed everyone to be pretty careful knowing this town. Okay.
What did the, what did the budget increase by last year for the voters? Do you guys remember? It was three something? Was that?
The default went down, right? I'm not the operating by timing.
Yeah, you know, I don't, I won't put you on the spot, but-
I don't have that paperwork in front of me. I, I can't remember if it was 3% or. But Kim did in her memo, you said you read that, Matt?
Yeah, yeah.
She's proposing that the board not just accept them and then go back to figure them all out later. Under the circumstances with personal reasons and everything, we're hoping we can move through and get these done by, I forget if it was October or November. and get these done by, I forget if it was October or November. We don't want to be in Thanksgiving and Christmas like we've been in the past and leaving it up to us to try and figure out the budgeting. We want everybody to get involved in it and try and, you know, work with each budget as it comes in. You need to kind of adjust and, and see anything that might need to be adjusted. It's great to let them do their own budgets, but you have to also look at the big picture and how the taxpayer is gonna, you know, support it.
So, and again, being new to this, I'm gonna ask, so the department head submitted, what, five days before? When do they submit?
Well, they have a schedule when they have to have their budget.
Okay, and then we will be able to review it before the meeting, right?
Right, and usually I think you want the department heads to come in and discuss it with you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we're, we're recommending that you don't just put it on hold and say, well, we'll accept it with that saying that we always say every year, we'll look at it at the end. We don't want to deal with this all at the end.
No, I want to get this done. I mean, even if we have to meet earlier, if, I mean.
It's too hectic to try and pull it together when it's Christmas or trying to get ready to close out the year and do the, um, you know, the town meeting, um, deliberative session. We need the board to help us. You need to decide. We prepared the budget last year and look at the predicament we're in. There was a lot of unanticipated expenditures that we did not know or plan on and now we're struggling to see where we can end at the end of this year.
And, you know, I'll just say, this will be the seventh time I've gone through this and we haven't found the right way to proceed yet. So I'm, I'm open, I'm open to anything because, like I said, we spend a lot of time on budgets that are just flat or they went up a little bit, when really we should be spending our time on the, the big hitter budgets. That should be the most time we spend.
That's why I think Kim is recommending a committee. So we get the department head to come in and meet with whoever the committee members are. You get one from the safety committee or you get one from the selectmen, whatever, and they kind of put the heads together and kind of, you know, hash it out and then bring it to the board. Something like that where we're not trying, I mean, you, you gotta start making these decisions and not putting it on our shoulders because we have all our other work to do, too. And it's hard and it's, we're not comfortable making decisions for the board because this year was really, the budget has just gone haywire and we're not comfortable being responsible for all of it. That's all I'm saying.
Joe?
Uh, yes, Joe Simone, it sounds like we're heading towards a budget committee type.
Well, again, let's, let's slow down because, so Nancy's, Nancy's the only one who's talking, but I was thinking the same thing, though.
I think that if that's, if that's gonna solve part of the issue, might be time to start looking at it, planning for it or whatever. That's all I'm saying.
That's the exact thought I had in my head when you were saying that.
It's unfair to put the burden on these folks to do everything and then for them to take all the crap that they take for responsibility that should be amongst a whole bunch of other people.
Yeah, we're not saying a budget committee, we don't want that. We just want a couple of people that can sit in with each department head, especially the bigger budgets, and try and iron out because you can't just say, give us what you think you need. It could go up a lot of money and you're not gonna get the budget to pass. The people also have to say. So, I mean, we're trying to help to bring everybody to a good place, but not wait until the end of the year and just expect everything's gonna fall into place. We just can't do it. There's too many needs and, and we don't know where the money's gonna come from. And things happen that we don't anticipate, so you gotta factor that all in, too. So that's all we're trying to say. Kim, Diane and I had this discussion, we're trying to get the board to play a more active role and take a lot of the burden off of us.
How much active do you want the board to be? We get the budget, we see it, we say decrease, increase, no or yes?
Well, that's what we're asking you to do, but.
We do that every year. We just get yelled at because we went up 1% last year, whatever we went up.
Okay, fine.
No, I think, so, I mean, I would just leave it here. If, if there is a budget coming in that is flat or under 1%, I don't think we need to, you know, look at it in a meeting because, let's face it, we're gonna pull it up, we're gonna look at it, it's gonna look the same as last year and we're gonna vote for it anyway. But I think if we are having a budget that's gonna be more than 1%, they're gonna go up 5%, 10% or whatever.
Right.
Those are the people we need to bring into a meeting and we need to have a working meeting. And all I mean by a working meeting is, it's not that much on the agenda that night.
Correct.
We're focused on the.
But we always do that.
The budget. Yeah, I think, I think the problem is, is, and this might just be my perception of it, is upfront, we're spending all the time with the small budgets, then all of a sudden at the end, we have the big budgets in there and there's this huge crunch and push at the last minute.
So let's move up the big budget to September.
One of the people, Bob Zelinski, Newton Junction resident. Mr. Burrell is stating that, you know, don't go over the little budgets. Well, if the little budget and if it only goes up 1%, but hey, we just found out that inflation is 5% or 6%, this little budget's been inflated to cover that. He had 5%, somebody had 5% or 6% or 10% more in their budget. I think you're doing the town a disservice if you don't review. I gather each one of you represents some department or, what's the name you use? Your liaison? Liaison? You should sit with that particular department and then report back to the rest of the board.
I think what he's referring to, that if, if Department A was 10,000 last year and came in 10,000 this year, we're not gonna spend a lot of time on it.
How did they cover? We know things went up significantly this year, really. So this person had that budget, you know, sandbagged a little. That's the word to use, was used for years, you know what I mean?
You're saying my department's sandbagging?
So I think all the budgets, all the budgets, no, there's always extra fluff. There's always.
Seriously?
Yeah.
So, I mean, every budget should be reviewed and by, you know.
So don't misunderstand me when I said that. It's not that they're not being reviewed. It's just that we're not scheduling.
They're being scrutinized. My budget got scrutinized for $70 this year, okay? Because I went over, $70 I couldn't get. So I don't know where the fluff is, but it's not in my department.
All righty, maybe you're just good at accounting.
Well, but I, I, I think we should move up the bigger budgets to September, early October, if they need more time.
Well, September is now, so we couldn't do that.
Well, I see the police department's like the end of November.
Yeah.
So let's move him up.
So September's off the table, right?
We'll move him up to October.
Yeah.
These little ones, we can move them down. No, yes?
So I hesitate to do this, but can we table this to the next meeting when we have five of us?
We can table it because you've got budget.
Proceed with the schedule as written.
Okay.
And then table the discussion of moving the bigger ones up.
All right. Okay, L., replacement costs for in-wall electric heaters at the town hall.
Um, so Larry, this I did mention to you. I came in on a Thursday morning about two weeks ago, went in the ladies' room and the heater was aglow and, um, I guess the fan burnt out. All the dust or whatever that was in there was burning, um, so we shut the breaker off. I called the electric company to come in. These electric heaters are all old. We definitely need heaters in the bathrooms because that never heats very well. We don't want the pipes to freeze. So I called the electrician to come in and give me prices. We have a price for the two bathroom heaters and the one in Diane's office, which has been here as long as I started working here. And we would like to, um, get those replaced before we do have a fire.
Are they independent heaters?
Yes.
And they don't go with the whole system?
They're all on their own circuit breaker.
But is it all one system?
I don't believe so. I think the bathrooms might be connected, but.
So the, the table?
Go ahead.
So I think in the, the downstairs restrooms, there's one thermostat that controls both of them.
No, there's two thermostats.
And they're separate.
But they run off one boiler?
No, they're electric heaters.
Electric.
So they don't have, they, you know, you plug them in, electricity type thing. They have nothing to do with the oil burner or propane or anything.
This is a safety issue.
1,400, 4,002. So this is two bills, right?
I only see one.
Only one bill for, was it 1,600 for all?
1,615.
Yeah.
That's for all three.
Oh, okay. And where's this money coming from?
General government buildings.
Does the board have any questions?
Oh, it's safety, so I'd like to get it done.
Excuse me?
Just in terms of the.
It's safety, so there's no.
Yeah, the only thing I want to advise you again is next time, don't shut off breakers. Call the fire department because it, clap a bit if town hall burnt down. Insurance companies not gonna cover.
Just a quick question. So electric is the only option, right?
Excuse me?
Yes.
Electric is the only option?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so just make them as energy efficient as possible to save down. Thanks.
No, the reason I was asking is because we're trying to, to, I don't know if Trish reached out to anybody yet, but we want to, with the, with the heating system, we want to convert the heating with the air and the air purifier to get all that system into one, so we could try to cover it with free money. That's what I'm saying. If you're replacing something that's joined by the main boiler, which now I know you're not, that we could've got that covered. But, all right, so Edwin, second?
Second.
Who made the motion?
Not me.
Nobody.
Nobody.
Somebody made the motion. Somebody make the motion.
Second.
Okay. Everybody made the motion? Matt, second. Kate?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Edwin?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. You said government buildings, right, Nancy?
Yes.
It's part of the motion, right?
Oh, the, the funds will come out of the government.
General government.
General government.
General government.
BPM maintenance line.
You got money left in there?
Not much, that's why I want to get it.
Lowly but surely depleting, though.
I have a question.
What?
Yes, ma'am.
So, and maybe we can't do this, but again, that grant that I got approved for 515,000, we already got 257,000. If I can make it COVID-related, it will be covered in that grant. Are these independent electric heaters, by any chance, is there a unit? Might be a little bit more expensive, but if it is a heater, cooler and air purifier that is all in one that I could then get paid for?
These are just a little electric heaters.
I know what you mean, but I'm just wondering, I mean, if that's what you got a price for, that's all you're gonna get. I'm just wondering if, if you want to give me the name, I can call and see if they also make them as a purifier electric heater because of COVID, then we could get it covered.
No, that would have to go to a duct system to be a purifier.
Yeah, that'd be a whole different system.
Really? Because these other ones are portable, too, so.
So this is just a small portable?
Yeah. Plug into the wall.
They're on the wall.
All right. Well, I'm looking at, you guys, there's a Dyson purifier.
Yeah, I just looked it up.
Yeah, there are things that are space heater air purifiers.
I don't think we need a purifier for a bathroom.
Sometimes we do.
Yeah, well, with Delta coming, you don't know what the winter's bringing and if it would be covered.
I have, I have a personal rule not to discuss bathrooms in this meeting ever again. We did that one night.
I can do it again.
We need heat so the pipes don't freeze.
All right, all right, you're gonna prove, you're gonna get them. Next, A., motion to pay for two extra tires. So this is the bill from Stratum Tire. I believe I sent everybody out an email last week on what happened and it's gonna come out of capital reserve?
Yes.
Okay.
So we need you to vote because the original bill was our, the original quote was for four tires.
Correct.
So we need to add these other two tires in, into it so Kim will know when it comes and the trustees will know when, when they can pay it.
Do you need the total?
I believe I have that for you. Hold on.
Is that the 3,991?
No.
Yes.
That's what I got.
Wasn't it?
No, yes.
You already, you just need the two tires, not, just the two tires.
Yes, because you approved some of it already.
Right.
So who's making the motion? Edwin? I thought so.
Yes, it was me.
So you're gonna make a motion to pay for two additional tires for tanker five? The cost for the tires is $1,476.50 and the funds to come from the fire apparatus equipment refurbished capital reserve fund.
That's exactly what I said.
I thought so.
Can I get a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Go ahead.
In my discussion, real quick, is just something I'd like to propose. I'm gonna vote yes for this motion, but if I'm somebody sitting at home that's been watching these meetings on TV lately, we're spending a lot of money on apparatus and vehicles. And if, if I'm the person sitting at home and, well, me sitting here, I want to see a strategy, not, not just on fire. I think fire and police are who own vehicles, right? I don't think we have any other vehicles owned in town. I think there is a strategy on these aging vehicles, but I've never seen it in writing. I, might be my bad. I think we need to see a strategy, we need to present it to the town and publish it in the town report so that people can see that, yes, when it rains, it pours. We've seen that lately with the fire equipment, right? We can't plan for everything, but you can plan for the rainy day. And what's, what's our strategy, I think, is what we need to show people. Because we just keep, we have a lot of bills.
Well, the deal was, I explained briefly, that the, the fire truck that we're trading in had brand new tires on it and the tanker that we're keeping had tires that were 10 years old, wouldn't pass inspection. So we paid to get, I believe, eight, six or eight tires transferred from the one we're getting rid of to the one that we're keeping, but the two tires in the front of that tanker were different size than the ones that were getting transferred over, so we had to buy two new ones. So we actually saved six tires by swapping them out.
Good.
And the truck we're getting rid of, they're gonna get the skin ball tires. But it's usually a 10-year plan on those tires, they only good for 10 years. So that's why we had to buy the two, but we actually saved on six. So. Second, okay, roll call. Kate?
Aye.
Edwin?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay.
So, so my idea dies on the vine, then?
What?
My idea of having a strategy for our vehicles.
Oh, that's a great idea, but that's not the motion.
He can, um.
I know it's not the motion, but no one, no one responded.
I just don't see what strategy can happen.
I mean, go.
I'd love to see it, I'd love to see it, but.
That was part of the motion, so.
Well, it wasn't part of the motion, it was.
But we can ask the fire chief to do a strategy, uh, give us a strategic plan on, on equipment for the next five to 10 years on.
I think five is enough, but, yeah, I mean.
It should be very low because he has mostly all new equipment now.
Right, exactly. But it seems like things are creeping up on us, which I don't think they should be. Again, when it rains, it pours, we all know that, right? Something breaks, and all of a sudden, two more things break. But shouldn't we have money over here to say, when this one breaks, this is what we're going to go after? Because when you do raise your budget to the voters, they can see that there's a strategy to go with that budget, that you're not just-
I like that.
You're not doing it arbitrarily, you know what I mean? That we do need this money, because here's our aging fleet, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we started to do that with reserve funds, that we need to continue.
Bob Zelensky this time is the fireman. You're liable to have, the chief say we'll adopt NFPA. You'll be replacing an ax in two years, you'll be replacing the bumper on the fire truck, because the safety requirements changed, you know, the federal regulations said, yeah, it could get very expensive if you do a complete NFPA. We're safe, anybody listening, that's a fireman in town or a concerned citizen? But there's some rules or regulations that if you ever adopted them again, it'd be, you know?
Yeah.
Like the tires, I believe it's either seven or eight years. Even if the truck only had 10,000 miles, you got to get rid of the tires because of NFPA.
Yeah, pretty sure it's seven zig, yeah.
It's like the Bible.
Well, in, in the end, the voters are going to tell us what we're going to spend money on, but, but we should have some sort of documented strategy, I think, so. I'm sure we have a strategy, we just don't. I haven't seen a document.
Okay, uh, next one's fire department repair invoice for the nineteen ninety-one E1 Turbo that the Primex declined.
Speaking of-
What is that?
What's the turbo on the E1 engine, the?
I don't have it here.
Oh, really?
But you're at the end of it.
No, you're, you're after this one.
Yeah, you're after this one, compound. I don't have that quote, you guys have their quote.
I'm clicking on it now.
The only fund we have is the capital reserve fund, correct?
Right, so my question was, I think at the last meeting, the board voted to, um, oh, we haven't voted where to pay that money out of for that fix on the turbo. Originally, the chief gave Kim the bill, said to take it from his budget, I believe. Hold on. And I'm, yeah, that's what it was. He told her to take it out of his fire department budget. My recommendation to the board is rescind that motion. If there was one, I couldn't seem to find it. But if there is one, that it be paid out of the capital reserve fund, because if you take it out of his budget, his budget's not going to have enough money, you're going to have to find it anyway. We don't have any money to find, I'm recommending it comes from the capital reserve.
Who made the motion last time, do you know?
Diane, was it a motion last time?
Definitely wasn't me.
I think that might have been, was, no.
I don't think it was, it wasn't part of those three.
Yeah, because we were waiting to get the invoice. I just got the invoice from Cody's yesterday, and it was for four thousand.
I don't think that was a motion.
So it's not rescinding a motion, it's a new motion to pay this, and to specifically stay where it's coming.
I don't know why the chief's had the bill and said to pay it out of his budget, but I don't remember that, I couldn't find a motion.
So I would move to pay the invoice from Northern New England Appraisal in the amount of-
Actually, no, that's not the one.
Cody's, in it?
Cody's, sorry.
Yep.
Cody's Towing.
Yep.
In the amount of four thousand six hundred forty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents, with the amount to come from the Fire and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund.
Yep.
Second?
Second, by Edmund, any discussion?
The bill, the bill that I have in front of me, just to make sure we're on the same thing, the bill that he gave Kim was for four thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars and thirty-three cents. So I'm not sure what the difference is.
Don't have that filled.
What'd you say, four seven seven four?
The original bill was four seven nine four three three, and I know the estimate that we got from Cody's was four thousand six forty-five seventy-nine.
All right, so you have to go with the four seven.
So, um, well, she just said four nine, didn't you?
Four seven nine four.
All right, so I'm going to go not to, change my number, Diane, not to exceed forty-eight hundred dollars.
Okay.
All right, still second by Edmund. Kate?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Edmund?
Aye.
I'm an aye, okay.
Thank you.
All right, EOC update. Well, that's what happens when you request to get on the same thing.
I know, well, some of it is exciting, some not so exciting. So just to clarify for those in TV land, you know, we're still in a federal emergency. People think because the state, Sununu said he canceled out the state of emergency, doesn't mean we're out of it. We are still in a federal emergency. We have, Larry and I have multiple meetings, multiple times a week, most of them are conference calls, giving us updates. Some of these updates, I think, are important, which is why I asked to be on this. So our update this week from CDC said they reminded us, us that if you are vaccinated but exposed to a person with COVID, you do not need to quarantine. We're getting a lot of these questions at the EOC, so that's one of the reasons I wanted to speak out loud. However, they say watch for symptoms. If you're not vaccinated, it's also recommended that if you're indoors for public meetings, then you should wear a mask. The CD guidance specifically, and I'm quoting this, says, except in certain circumstances, people who have been in close contact with someone who has COVID-19 should quarantine. However, the following people with recent exposure may not need to quarantine if they've been fully vaccinated, or if they've been previously diagnosed with COVID within the last three months. So those are the times that you don't need to quarantine. As far as our community, as a community, what we're hearing on these calls is the communities with a lower vaccine rate are becoming problematic. So Larry and I asked on our call last week, okay, so tell us where we stand. So here's what they're saying. CDC bases their statistics by our population. They have Newton with a population of four thousand nine hundred fifty-nine. As of yesterday, we have 30 new cases in the last 14 days. 20 active cases, and a total of 459 cases since the beginning of the pandemic. The problem is, our vaccine, vaccine rate is only 37.7% of our residents have been vaccinated, as opposed to Kingston, which is 44.7. So our numbers are low, they're actually considering us not so great. So we definitely need more people vaccinated. Larry and I are working on maybe a mobile clinic to come here again. We tried to get it for Town Day, they were just overbooked and they just couldn't do it. In addition to this, Larry and I have been talking to the superintendent, he's got some major issues. And for those of you people that love to be on Facebook, you know, it's a great place, I guess, to talk, but really, if you have questions, you should be calling the offices. He has given me a letter that he sent out to all the parents. I'm going to read it, because some of us don't have kids in the school. And he was responding to people that were frustrated. So it starts out, "I'm sorry that you're so frustrated. This is hard for everyone involved, and we are doing the best we can." Today, the number of cases, now again, this is from the school superintendent, Tom Ambrose, the number of cases of COVID in the district are nine total active COVID cases, which is one tenth of one percent of the population of 1,450 students. There are two active cases at Baker, four at Memorial, and four at the high school. He said another student at the high school will come off the list tomorrow. There are none so far at the middle school. We recently, again, this is from him, "We recently asked the soccer team to mask up for 14 days, just in case they did have a spread within the team. Fortunately, there have been no further cases for two weeks, and no further evidence of the spread on the soccer team." Excuse me, if I lose my voice, Billy says I'll be perfect. Overall, there are 85 active cases within the three towns in our school district. And there has been an outbreak at a senior citizens facility in Fremont, which likely has little or no impact on our schools. The number of cases in our three towns is just over point five a half a percent, again, because we have approximately 16,000 residents between the three towns. It's important to remember that only 14 and a half percent of households in our three communities have school-aged children. This means we could have a large outbreak at a senior citizens facility that really has no impact on the schools. There is no way administrators can justify a district-wide mask mandate to those who don't want masks when the numbers are this low. To be clear, there is no outbreak in the fourth grade, so evidently, this is all because of something on Facebook. There is no outbreak in the fourth grade at Memorial. We have carefully analyzed what's been happening, and the cases are unrelated. We are watching Memorial very closely, and if we meet the criteria for an outbreak, we will be putting a masking requirement in place. We treat the situation the same as we did the soccer team at the high school. If we see a potential cluster of cases at any level, we will require people to mask up immediately. Unfortunately, there is no statewide mask mandate right now in this. We need to understand this for everywhere. In fact, the state of New Hampshire has zero emergency orders regarding COVID at this time. Regarding the open house at Memorial, evidently, that was another big thing. Schools are a public organization, and if parents want to come to an open house without masks when there is no mask mandate in the state of New Hampshire, we cannot exclude them. They are taxpayers, and they have the rights to our organization. We cannot deny them access. You have the right to wear a mask, and you have a right to ask your child to wear a mask. Administrators are happy to support you in that decision. There are some concrete things you can do to change the situation. We suggest talk to the governor and call the Department of Health and Human Services. They are issuing guidances that masks are recommended, and we, as the school, follow their guidance. I can assure you that we will tell you it's a local decision. The reality is that without a mandate from the state, it is very unlikely that schools are going to require a mask when cases are this low. The staffing shortages today are due primarily to absences for other reasons other than COVID, combined with a national shortage of substitutes, bus drivers, and custodians. The business administrator, head of maintenance, and I have spent a lot, has spent half of today rocking and mudding the special education offices, because we are short five custodians. We are all in this together. Thankfully, the school board voted to raise the substitute page, a hundred and ten dollars per day. We have already hired some new subs with this new rate, one started today. I hope this information helps you to understand the metrics and the parameters that are involved. This is really hard for everyone, casting stones is not fair. If you want, really want things to change, you need to start lobbying as senators, representatives, and politicians running the government for the state of New Hampshire. Dr. Chen says masks are recommended. As of last Wednesday, they are recommended, not required. I suggest you call the office to express your concern. So clearly, there was a lot, when he and I and Larry were talking on the phone, it was pretty heated what he was subjected to. So because that went out to everyone, he gave me a copy so I could read it, and I told him I'd be speaking today. So in addition to that, so that's, I'm done with the school. As you have seen in the news, severe cases and death, and this comes from CDC, are mostly seen in unvaccinated individuals. New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services state, "We are mostly in a pandemic of the unvaccinated with younger individuals under 50." Dear, I don't qualify for that, okay? "Some have underlying conditions, and some are children." They further stated, "Schools will be most likely, well, schools will most likely cause the numbers to rise." And again, communities with low vaccine rates should get a positive voice to get vaccinated, and that's, I gave you those figures earlier. Now, on our legal calls that Larry and I are doing with CDC and Homeland Security, there were a couple of questions, I didn't bring them all, but some that I thought you'd want to know. And one of the questions was, "Are communities going back to virtual meetings?" And the answer was, "Not at this time." Without a state of emergency, 91A does not allow it. The second question was, "The quarantine information is based on early COVID data. The Delta variant is more infectious, and the vaccinated can infect other asymptomaticly." So why hasn't the guidance adapted to those issues? So this was a question. And the answer is, "We are taking questions from CDC and others as the data comes in. The vaccine is protective against severe illness and death. There will be breakthrough cases, which will have acute illness and mostly attributed to COVID-19." Boy, that's a politician's answer. Okay, another question was, we asked, is the state doing, what is the state doing for contact tracing? If you remember in the beginning, we were very proactive about trying to keep track of anyone in town that might be, might have been near us or in a meeting so that we could do contact tracing. So that was a question. And the answer is, "The state is doing a little bit, in a limited way. However, they're focusing on younger people, 25 and under, that may not have had a chance to get the vaccine." They said they'll keep us posted, but remind us to continue our own contact tracing. When all this started, we had something called E911, and every morning, and I don't say we, only one person got it, the fire chief. And what it showed was addresses. So if we got a call, they would know, okay, and there was a code word, and if you're responding, you know to dress appropriately. They're not doing that anymore, and that's what this question was all about. Excuse me. Now, as far as the EOC goes, so far, and this is on a positive note, the EOC has written many grants, and I'm bringing this up because you guys are going to be talking about budgets. I want you to know where we stand. So one of the reimbursements we did, we received the check on March 31st. It was a clinic that Larry and I organized over at the high school, and then one at Packer Meadows. So this reimbursed fire department and EOC payroll that worked at the clinics. It was three thousand eight hundred and two dollars and fifty cents. Then on March 5th, we got a reimbursement of two thousand, sorry, let me back up. A reimbursement for supplies, that was all COVID supplies, and that was two thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. On April 7th, we got a reimbursement of our message board, our sign. So we get paid for that sign every hour of every day, 24/7, as long as it's COVID-related. So you may have noticed on Town Day, we kept a COVID-related message there. So we get paid for that. Our first check was twelve thousand eight hundred and ten dollars and twenty-four cents, which was deposited in the Emergency Operating Management Capital Reserve. This is not reflected in our budget, just so that you know. We also got on April 7th, another reimbursement of four thousand forty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. Unfortunately, these were purchases that happened for COVID supplies in 2020, but we didn't get the check until this year. So it got deposited into the general fund, because we can't address, we can't put it in something that's closed out from last year. So that's in the general fund from this year. Also, on April 21st, we got another reimbursement of three thousand two hundred ninety-six dollars and seventy-three cents. And then we've got some outstanding ones. So again, for the message board, we've got a total of fifty-four thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-two cents coming in from, for the message board. So that's July, the end of June, July, August, and so far, I figured it up to right now in September. In addition to all of this, we've got the ARPA grant, which is the American Rescue Plan Act grant. That's the one I applied for, or Larry and I applied for it, and it got approved. And we, the call that we had in the webinar, which by the way, I still owe $70 for that, you guys. We owe it to the New Hampshire Municipal Association. But they let me come anyway, even though I was an unpaid individual. Part of that, we've received, we got like 257, 257, 955, 50 already. And it was interesting on the call, they said it's probably the first time that the state has ever given you your money before they found out what you're going to do with it. So what we're going to do with it is, if we can make it COVID-related, and I've already started calling many of our department heads, we can use it for infrastructure. One of the things that they brought up, like, let's think about elections because of COVID was at the fire station, probably will continue to be there, but our traffic pattern, the lack of cones, the lack of lines, that can be all infrastructure. Infrastructure for parks, I was going to call you. If we say that our parks were overused because everybody was home during COVID, we can get some of that funded out of this five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The Happa Portable Air Purifiers for all the individual offices here, the police chief wants one. I'm not sure if Mike Pevero's going to want one, he, I'm not sure about that. But anyway, we've, we need a lot of air purifiers, probably eight to 10. We've got to get one for Jim, one for the conference room. We could also go for water at the transfer station. I talked to Mary Jo, there's a software program that she'd love to get at Town Hall, which, again, if she had had it during COVID, would have made her job easier. The police chief said the same thing, remote access, when he was forced to be, well, I shouldn't say forced, but when he had to be home and not at the, at the police station, if he could have accessed his computer for whatever it was they were doing, it might be something that we can throw into this. I've talked to Jim, we've got prices for a scanner printer for MyLars, which was an issue during COVID, because every place was closed, he couldn't go make copies anywhere. So we may be able to get that approved. And then conservation had some issues. We had a lot of damage on our conservation land, both the bush farm and the peanut trail during COVID. A lot of it was from ATVs, and a lot of that could be bundled into this grant. So I'm throwing all these ideas, because as I'm looking at everyone, maybe your mind is thinking, if you've got something that maybe we should consent, shoot me an email. and I'll start getting prices as I've already started doing for some of these things. Including the library. They sent me their information because they're going to need some help, either with their furnace like here or air purifiers. So we really did a, really a good job. This is kind of cool. And I think maybe we're talking about budgets. There might be ways that we can save money for the residents. If we plug things in and again, make it COVID-related, we could get it covered. That's my report.
Did, since you brought it up, have we worked out the $70 for this class? So, so can, can we make a motion? Can we, but.
I can send the invoice if you want.
So I would assume the problem is, where do you spend the 70 against? What account? Is that the?
So I can answer that, actually. One of the things that we learned on this ARPA is every, all the money that we spend on payroll, while we're working on this, all the administration that we're doing can come out of that. So that $70 can come out of the $257,000 that you already got.
Let's not go crazy. $70 out of $2.
I know, doesn't it?
All right, as long as, as long as we have it, so you get your money back. I mean.
All of the work, they recommended that, all of the work, they actually said, and I haven't talked to Kim yet, to come up with a separate pay sheet because all of the administration work that we're, that I'm doing on this should come out of that $257,000. It's, it's broad-based, and it's all about the grant. It's not about a particular department. It's going to all the departments.
That's awesome. Thank you for your hard work, seriously. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, Joe.
I have a question. I heard a number thrown out of town residents of 4,959. How many residents do we have in town?
How many residents we have in town?
Yeah.
Under 5,000, under 5,000.
Was that number accurate? Where you get that number from?
So that number. We asked the same question. Where did you get this number from, from the state? When they said our percentage, our money is going to be based on population. So wherever the state goes to get it, they did it for all the towns, and we couldn't even challenge that. So.
I think they get it from the census bureau.
Do they?
I hope so, yes.
Okay. Because I think, what did I say it was? 49, 4959 or something? Yeah.
It's the first time I've heard that number, so.
Yeah, usually it's 45 something. All right, next.
Multiplying, that's.
Manifest.
Can I really fast, can we talk about Halloween?
Halloween already?
What's that?
I'm sorry, but we forgot to do one thing that needs to be done. Kate, you need to state why you're not here.
I did that in the opening of sex.
She did downstairs.
Downstairs before.
And somebody captured that.
Yes.
Okay, then you're good.
Cool. So, so I'll just throw it out there, but so normally October 31st is when we do it, right? And I think we usually do five to eight.
Yep.
Okay. October 31st is a Sunday, okay? And just so you know, the Patriots kickoff at 4:00 PM. So trick or treat would be smack in the middle of a Patriots game if anybody cares about that. Now, if you make it Saturday, okay, and my wife is watching this at home, and she's going, she's mad at me already. But if, if you make it Saturday, now, some people might have already planned a Halloween party on that Saturday, so we'd be kind of against their Halloween party. So I guess I'm, I'm open to what anybody's ideas are. Traditionally, it would be Halloween night, five to eight, which is a Sunday.
Well, you know how the residents are with the Halloween.
Exactly, yeah. I don't know if, if anybody's given it any thought, or we want to, we could table it, but.
Is there a way to do a survey?
I think there's an online component, survey on Facebook. Diane's going to have no part of it.
I'm in favor of two to five, you know.
But what's, what's going to happen is if we do table it.
Sunday.
If we, if we do table it until the next meeting, you know, people are going to start to ask about it, right?
Right.
I will say, you know, trunk or treat is going to be the 23rd, if anybody, so that, we've scheduled that so it's far away from anything else.
So, if I may, as a resident, I would rather you keep it that you normally do because I have, it's set, and I don't have to go looking at it. And I have a pause button on my, my TV that I can pause it and give out the candy and then come back and catch up on it.
So when I'm done going around with my kids, can I come to your house and watch the game?
Just pause it. All you have to do is pause it.
Or record it, one or the two.
Record a pause.
Yes, Joe.
Not everybody watches the Patriots, sorry.
Oh, come on.
Come on, really?
Outrageous.
Just my two cents, and I think we ought to keep it as a traditional time.
Five to eight.
Parents are aware of the fact, even though there's a Patriots game, they're aware of the fact. Either the mother's going to do it, or the father's going to do it, or whatever. I think we just keep it the way it is. That way it's standard.
Yeah. Okay, manifest.
So I'll just, I'll just move that we announced that trick or treat is going to be Sunday, October 31st, 5 to 8:00 PM.
Okay, and trunk or treat is the 23rd?
23rd, yeah.
What do you hours on that?
I think it's the same, like, four to six, but I don't quote me at the school.
The school, okay.
So trunk or treat is?
October 23rd.
In what time?
I don't quote me. I think it's four to six.
To be determined.
Okay.
The date's accurate, not the time.
Right.
Okay.
But do we want to vote on the October 31st?
Do we have to vote on it?
I think you should, so people know.
I get a motion.
He just motioned it. I seconded it.
Okay. Any discussion? Kate?
Aye.
Evan?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. October 31st, 5 to 8. And we're down to the manifest.
So I would move to sign vendor manifest dated September 14th, 2021, in the amount of $200.
Second.
Second by Evan. Any discussion? Okay, roll call. Kate?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Evan?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
So I moved to sign vendor manifest dated September 21st, 2021, in the amount of $1,260,113.36, of which $1,189,405 goes towards the October Sanborn Regional School District payment.
Second.
Second by Evan. Any discussion? Evan?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Aye.
I would move to sign cable vendor manifest dated September 21st, 2021, in the amount of $492.01.
Second.
Second by Evan. Any discussion? Matt?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Evan?
Aye.
Aye.
I would move to sign the payroll manifest for pay period August 29th through September 11th, 2021, with a pay date of September 16th, 2021.
Second.
Second by Evan. Any discussion? Evan?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Is that it?
That's it for the manifest.
No, you get the minutes.
No, I need a motion for the non-public and public meetings dated September 7th, 2021.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Evan. Kate?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Evan?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Review non-public session minutes for unsealing.
I don't see any that says.
Announcements. Household hazardous waste day is October 2nd from 9:00 to 12:00. Do anything else? Okay, motion to close. Oh, Joe?
Speaking of hazardous waste, I just saw someone had on, on Peaslee and Walnut, they had a bucket out there with a whole bunch of paint or turpentine or something like that. So someone might want to have to look into that.
So you need to file it with the code enforcement officer?
I wonder if they have trash pickup and they were supposed to get it?
This is on the outside, right by the road.
I'll look into it tomorrow.
Yeah. I just saw that today.
Okay. Is there anything else? We're going to adjourn at?
Listen to adjourn.
8:43.